All right, good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, March 5, 2024, Urbendale City Council Meeting. I will call the meeting to order and ask Nicole to take roll call, please.
Bodie?
Here.
Carberry Montgomery?
Here.
Kroll? McBurney?
Here.
Rosendahl?
Here.
Please stand as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Urbendale is a national leader in character counts, endeavoring at all times to memode and model the principles of trustfulness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. Conducting tonight's meeting, we expect that all participants will act in a respectful manner consistent with these principles. All right, item two is to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by-
Second.
By Bodie, discussion, please vote. That passes. Item three, presentations. We do have a special proclamation for Women's History Month in 2024. Whereas March is a time to celebrate and honor the countless contributions of women throughout history, and whereas we acknowledge the tireless efforts of women who have played pivotal roles in shaping our nation, our state, and the city of Urbendale, and whereas we honor the legacy of women like Bada Wilson, Elizabeth Williamson, Eileen Lemon, Miriam Klein, Marilyn Cole Morgan, Susan Seepke, and Mary Polson, who have served on the Urbendale City Council, as well as Bridget Carberry Montgomery, Amy Kroll, and Patricia Bodie, who are currently serving and contributing to our community's progress. Now therefore, I, Robert Andwig, Mayor of the City of Urbendale, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2024 as National Women's History Month in Urbendale, led us to celebrate the achievements of women, past and present, and strive to create a future where equality and inclusivity thrive in every aspect of our society. To sign that, I'm going to ask Pat and Bridget and Amy to step up with me, though. And it's not insignificant to note, that's a majority of our council, too. So congratulations and thank you for your achievements and your work for our city. All right, we will move on to item four. Citizens formed to see opportunity to address the council on something that's not a part of tonight's regular agenda. Would anyone like to address the council? Channing? Since I knew you were.
Good evening. I'm Channing Dutton. I live at 3815 Greenview, just a few steps away from the city council. I had an opportunity to attend the February 20th meeting where you had a presentation from Snyder and Associates on a project to spend $160 million on the Interstate 80-35 interchange between University and Douglas. And I don't know if it was at that meeting, but shortly after that meeting, someone said to me, and the thought has been with me for some time, and I wanted to at least share that thought with the city council, and that is, we are on the cusp of a climate catastrophe that's going to soon overwhelm Urbendale and all of central Iowa, and we are very correctly looking at spending $160 million on road projects to allow us to move cars and vehicles in a very kind of small area of Urbendale. But I asked my wife the other day, I said, you know, if we had to get on a city bus and go someplace, where would we go and find that bus? What would we walk to? What location would we walk to? And as this city council is asked to have a forward-looking vision, it's perfectly appropriate to think about how are we going to move vehicular traffic in the interstate corridor? But there's going to come a time where the people of Urbendale are going to require that public transportation, and they're going to need it, and we sow those seeds today with the decisions that you make. And I know that on your agenda, there's the Viaduct Trail construction that's going to be taking place, which is an equally appropriate project, and I just urge you to keep hitting the long ball, swing for the fences, in terms of what Urbendale will need in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Channing. All right. Vern, I'll recognize you.
Vern Melzap, Urbendale. I was gonna just remark that I'm not even sure climate change is real. I mean, and I always go against the Green New Deal. And I think it's wrong because, I mean, talking about transit, I talked to somebody in the MTA, and they said that, I said, you guys have a few electric buses, and they said, yeah. I said, well, I don't see any, and they say, well, that's because they're all in the shop, because I guess they don't even hardly function in the wintertime either. So the whole point is that we're shooting for 15-minute cities, and you have the Affirmative Housing Act and stuff, which just takes inner city, moves it to the suburbs, and we can't do nothing about it except for to just do it, I guess, because, yeah, affirmative action housing. I'm sure people have heard of it. So I'm just saying, there's no benefit really to, if you get a hybrid maybe, but the city buying strictly green and charging stations and everything like that, it's not going to work. Just a waste of money, in my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you, Vern. Would anyone else like to address the council on something that's not a part of tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, then we will move on. Item five is to approve the minutes from the February 20 meeting.
Move to accept the minutes, so the pair of members-
Rosendahl? Second.
Second by Bodie, discussion, please vote.
Did my eye not go through? Did I do something wrong?
It shows up.
Okay.
All right, that passes. Thank you. Item six, the consent agenda. There are 11 items for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Kroll.
Second.
Second by Rosendahl, discussion, please vote. That item passes. Moving on then to public hearings. The first public hearing is item 7.1, a public hearing to consider the public access easement vacation for Lot 20 Eagles Plaza at 3941 to 4019 Hunter Street. The public notice for this is published in the February 23. Des Moines Register asks any objections, so that notice is published.
There were none.
Open the public hearing. Motion by Kroll.
Second.
Second by McBurney, discussion, please vote. That passes, and to introduce this is our Community Development Director, Steve Franklin. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening all. So this is a request to vacate a public access easement for the parcel you see highlighted here in red, which is off of Hunter Street. This is Northwest Urbendale Drive. Hunter Street tees in right there. This is the existing building, and there is room at the other end of the parking lot, north end of the parking lot, for another building that was shown on the original site plan back way back when. The easement was recorded, what, just over 19 years ago? And for a reason that I can't tell you, I'm not really sure why, before my time, the access easement was basically just laid over the whole parcel, which is problematic when you have language in there about prohibiting any future structures or change of grade of things like that, when you've got another office building that's going to get built. So we've been talking for a couple of years now, actually, about a group that's interested in purchasing the property at the north end of the parking lot to eventually build another building at that end of the parking lot. As a matter of fact, there's a closing tomorrow, as I understand, to be able to do that. So we've been working on this for quite some time. There is a new access easement that has now been recorded, public access easement, that does account for where the driveline and the parking lot are and doesn't include the entirety of the lot, and so it won't be a problem to come back in with a site plan at some point in the future for that additional office building. So the request, the recommendation from staff is to go ahead and vacate the old public access easement. I would note, we do have a request to suspend the rules and make tonight the third and final reading, again, because there's a closing tomorrow on the property. Staff would certainly have no objection to that now that the new easement has actually been recorded.
All right.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve? All right, we're in a public hearing on this item. Would anyone like to address the council on this? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Bodie, discussion, please vote. That passes. Who wants to tackle this?
Motion to approve Resolution 029-2024.
Motion by McBurney.
Second.
Second by Kroll, discussion, please vote.
Motion to waive the first and second reading?
No.
Or what?
Suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules to waive the first and second?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules?
Yes.
Second.
Motion by McBurney, second.
Oh, we can do it all in?
Montgomery, no. Second by Carberry Montgomery, discussion, please vote.
You already wrote it all down. Look at you, Blake.
He's a gunner.
Let's see. Oh.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Let's confirm this passes first. Don't get ahead of us.
Motion to approve the first-
Hang on.
Wait, what?
I apologize, technical-
Oh, I thought it already popped up and-
No, not yet, not yet.
Oh, my bad.
That was McBurney. Second was by?
Second by Carberry Montgomery.
Carberry. Did that come up for her?
It just says to suspend the rules. It's a vote, yes. But the previous one also said to suspend the rules and some more words.
I think I clicked on something wrong when I put that out, and it deleted the-
That's right, I got confused, because I saw it pop up.
Is it still asking you for a vote now?
Yeah.
If you can, just full.
Vote, yes.
Thank you.
All right, that passes.
All right, motion to approve the first reading, waive the second reading, approve the third reading. That's the final reading, and coordinates 2024-2022.
Very good. Motion by McBurney.
It was written very well.
Second.
Second by Bodie, discussion, please vote. That passes. Thank you. Item 7.2 is a public hearing and consideration of bids for the 2024 PCC Patch Program Phase III. The public notice for this is published in the February 16, 2024. Des Moines Register asks if they have objections to that. Notice is published.
There were none.
Motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Kroll, second. Second by Rosendahl, discussion, please vote. That passes, and to introduce this is our Director of Engineering Public Works, John Larson. John?
Yep. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is our third phase of our annual patch program. So as of February 28, we received seven bids on the project. We're recommending the low bid from Brothers Cleaning Corporation, doing business as Brothers Concrete, in the amount of $649,005.12. Their bid was approximately $68,000 or 9.5% less than our estimate. And with this project, we'll be patching around 7,000 square yards at 91 locations, and we anticipate the project being completed by September 20. And here's just a map showing in the areas in pink where the patches will be occurring, or north of Aurora Avenue and east of 86th Street. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for John? We are in public hearing on this item. Would anyone like to address the council on this item? All right, seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Kroll.
Second.
Second by Bodie, discussion, please vote. That passes. We have three items for consideration.
Move to approve Resolution 77-2024.
Motion by Rosendahl.
Second.
Second by Kroll, discussion, please vote. That passes.
Motion to approve Resolution 78-2024.
Motion by Rosendahl.
Second.
Second by Kroll, discussion, please vote. That passes.
Motion to approve Resolution 79-2024.
Motion by Rosendahl.
Second.
Second by Kroll, discussion, please vote. That passes. Moving on, item 7.3 is a public hearing to consider the $10,500,000 general obligation bonds or capital loan notes, excuse me. The public notice for this is published in the February 23, 24. Des Moines Register asks any objections, so that notice is published.
There were none.
Open the public hearing.
So moved.
Kroll.
Second.
By Bodie, discussion, please vote. That passes, and introducing this is our Finance Director, Nikki Lamb. Nikki?
Mayor and members of the council, I have the next three items for you. We have three separate public hearings tonight, but I'm going to talk about them in cumulative, because it's all related to the same debt issuance. Just an overview, we have three separate items. It's based on the type of bond. So the first public hearing will be for the $10.5 million that's our regular CIP-based projects that are supported by the debt levy. Then we go to a $4 million that is the urban renewal piece, so the TIF-supported pieces of the CIP. And then the last piece is just $30,000. That covers the general corporate purpose, which in this year happens to just be the public art piece. But we have to open and close a public hearing separately for each item, as we have done in the past. And then the last item is just the resolution to authorize the levy that will go along with it that is rolled into the budget that will happen in another month. Yeah, we still have quite a ways. The cumulative of these three issuances, this gives us a little bit of cushion. This is the bond that will be sold April 16th is the plan. It authorizes 14.5 million. We anticipate issuing 13.385, so we give ourselves some cushion to cover what the market may be. Happy to answer any questions, but we have a lot of up and down procedurals now.
So you're asking for the ability to request more if the rates are higher or-
No, the cushion, in theory, will only go down from there. This is enough to cover the project cost, but based on if there's a premium or a discount bid, we actually generally go down from there. The cushion is to cover issuance costs. If for some reason we don't get much premium or discount, we would use those funds, but usually we cover that with cash on hand. So it's always just kind of a cushion, just in case something last minute changes, then we have the authorization to go up to that, but it has never done that. Thank you.
That's why we have you.
Any questions on that?
All right.
I'll move to close. Oh, sorry.
We're in a least stop rub. Is anyone, we're in a public hearing on this one. Would anyone like to address the council on this? Now, is there a motion to close?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Motion by Carberry Montgomery.
Second.
Second by Bodie, discussion, please vote. That passes. One resolution.
So this is, we're approving the-
Just the first.
The first one, Resolution 73.
Yeah. Motion to approve, Councilor, 7696.
Or actually, Resolution-
Resolution 73.
73, 2024.
We're on 73. Motion to approve Resolution 73-2023.
Motion by Rosendahl.
Second.
Second by Bodie, discussion, please vote. That passes. Item 7.4 is the public hearing to consider $4 million general obligation urban renewal bonds or capital loan notes. The public notice for this was published in the February 23, 2024. Des Moines Register asks if there are any objections, so that notice is published.
There were none.
Ask for motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Kroll.
Second.
Second by Carberry Montgomery, discussion, please vote. Okay, nothing further to add. So this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the council on this item? Ask for motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Bodie.
Second.
Second by Rosendahl, discussion, please vote. That passes.
I'll move Resolution 74-2024.
Motion by Bodie.
Second.
Second by McBurney, discussion, please vote. That passes. Item 7.5 is a public hearing to consider the $30,000 general obligation bonds or capital loan notes. The public notice for this is published in the February 23, 2024. Des Moines Register asks if there are any objections, so that notice is published.
There were none.
Motion to open, is there a motion to open the public hearing, excuse me?
So moved.
Motion by Kroll.
Second.
Second by Bodie, discussion, please vote. That passes. We are in public hearing on this item. Would anyone like to address the council on this? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by McBurney.
Second.
Second by Kroll, discussion, please vote. That passes.
Motion to approve Resolution 075-2024.
Motion by McBurney.
Second.
Second by Rosendahl, discussion, please vote. That passes.
Motion to approve Resolution 069-2024.
Motion by McBurney, second. Second by Rosendahl, discussion, please vote. That passes. All right, thank you. That ends our public hearings. Item made is establish new public hearings versus item 8.1 to establish a public hearing for the Hickman Road Viaduct Trail. There are two items for consideration. First would be establishing April 2 as the public hearing date.
Motion to approve Resolution 80-2024.
Motion by Rosendahl.
Second.
Second by Bodie, discussion, please vote. That passes. Also.
Move Resolution 81-2024.
Motion by Rosendahl.
Second.
One second, Mayor, on that one?
Yes.
I had in the memo to recommend delegating authority to me. Can we have that changed to stick to you as the mayor? How the document's been set up in the DocuSign?
Okay, so the railroad is asking, the motion, or the letter said that they would delegate to you, right? So the road's asking, yeah, so-
We could change it to having the mayor authorized to sign the documents.
So with your motion, is that-
So I motioned to change it to that?
Yes.
And then approve that later?
Yes.
Motion to change the signing authority of Resolution 81-2024 to the mayor.
Okay.
Recommend approval.
Thank you. Motion by Rosendahl.
Second.
Second by Bodie, discussion, please vote. That passes. All right. Item 8.2 is to establish a public hearing for the 2024 Loop Fiber Project.
Motion to approve Resolution 82-2024.
Motion by Kroll.
Second.
Second by McBurney, discussion, please vote. That passes. All right. Item nine, regular agenda items. First is item 9.1, and that's the general obligation bond redemption for Series 2017B, 2018A, and 2018B. Nikki?
All right, Mayor and members of the council, authorized to issue the $13 million, and now I'm going to turn around and pay off an additional 12. So this is the good news of local option sales tax. We'll call and retire. That is the 2018A issuance. Those are all with local option sales tax for the Fire Station 43 bond. So we are calling and paying that off early, as promised. So that's $6.565 million that we will call and pay off. And then the other two issues are TIF bonds that are callable, and we have the TIF funds set aside that we've already accumulated for that, so we're going to go ahead and call both of those for another $2.89 million and $2.8. That's the 2017Bs and the 2018Bs. So those three items will be called and redeemed on June 1, 2024, and they will be gone forever. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, questions for Nikki? We have three resolutions.
I'll move approval of Resolution 070-2024.
By Carberry Montgomery.
Second.
Second by Bodie, discussion, please vote. That passes.
I'll move Resolution 071-2024.
Motion by Carberry Montgomery.
Second.
Second by Bodie, discussion, please vote. That passes.
And I will also move approval of Resolution 072-2024.
Motion by Carberry Montgomery.
Second.
Second by Bodie, discussion, please vote. That passes. Item 9.2 is consider the collective bargaining agreement with the Des Moines Association of Professional Firefighters, AFL-CIO Local 4, and to introduce this is our Human Resources Director, Erin Freeman. Erin?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and members of council. So before you tonight, you'll see a three-year collective bargaining agreement with the fire union. For the last few months, we've been negotiating the terms of the contract, and their union membership ratified the tentative agreement a few weeks ago on February 22. So I'll bring it to you at this point. Some things worth noting are a 4% across-the-board increase for the next two years, starting this July, and then a wage reopener for year three. We thought that was really important to not go any further out than two years with wages in any of the contracts that we negotiated this last fall and winter, just given property tax changes, so we kept consistent with that. And then we adjusted the vacation accrual schedule in response to some similar acceleration that we did for the non-union membership last year. Aside from that, no real notable changes to that, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
And this is all reflected in the budget that we had gone through?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Is there something further? Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 085-2024.
Carberry Montgomery.
Second.
By Bodie, discussion, please vote. That passes. All right, thank you, Vern. Item 9.3 is consider the agreement for the Crisis Canines of the Midwest, and to introduce this is our Fire Chief, Cardwell. Mike, it's up to you. Thank you.
Good evening. We're here tonight to ask you to consider an agreement with Crisis Canines in the Midlands. And with me tonight is firefighter Paramore Lownderry. I'm going to ask him to step up. He is the handler that is a part of this project as well. What we're asking for tonight is for the city to sign an agreement for the city to take ownership of a therapy dog, and we would be using the therapy dog as a way to help with our mental health. As where, where firefighter health and wellness is very important part of what we do. So this is one of the, the latest projects that we've seen across the country as a way to immediately deal with, with some of these issues that are coming up. And the idea is pretty simple. You've seen it at hospitals, you've seen it in schools. The idea that dogs can be trained with a handler to be in emotional situations and not only uh not react to them, but actually be able to seek out the people that are seeming to have the most difficulty, and then respond to them in a calming way that allows some of those emotions to be uh literally petted out. And if you've ever had a dog, you know what I'm talking about. Bad day, come home. This is the same process. It's been seeing incredible results in hospitals and nursing homes, and we've seen good movement across it in emergencies over the last couple of years. This is not the first dog in Iowa. Um, there are several other programs that are already in play and several others that are in training at the same time. Um, and from what I've been told, there are a number of other communities that are considering uh going to this program as well. So it's not something we're going to be unique with, but we are going to be the first one to have one of our line people doing it. And uh, we've worked very closely through HR, and I appreciate their work and uh risk management, as well as the, the model that we got from the police department in terms of um how to actually structure the agreement so that the dog can be properly maintained to take care of, as well as the city being protected. Initially, the dog and the handler will be used for peer support and incident debriefings. But as, as we've already had discussions, as the dog gets further training with their handler, there is the possibility of involving it in law enforcement. Again, especially for young kids that have been witnesses or part to, you know, serious crimes. Um, and then also for public education, again, to show the benefits of these types of programs. That is Logan, and we decided not to bring the dog tonight, although I've had requests already for city council and for the hallway to have therapy visits. So some of the different things that Crisis Canines uh of the Midwest actually does. And also with us tonight is Becca Smith from Crisis Canines, who will answer any questions if you have any. This, again, just sort of outlines the different programs the dog and the handler will go through. It is a very extensive process that you're going to go through. Logan and the Dog Blitz will train together for a year before they ever reach the point where they'll be certified for therapy dogs. So it's a number of classes that they have been doing. Crisis Canines estimates the cost of training a dog and a handler at about ten thousand dollars, and they undertake fundraising and donations to cover that cost, which is a pretty impressive part. Um, the handler will provide the home. That's part of the agreement, that they will take care of the dog, provide the dog. It's the necessary support in the home situation. The city's part of that is that we're going to support him with the day-to-day expenses, the food, the treats, the kennel for the, for the dog. And then we'll provide insurance to cover the city as well as the canine in case there's uh unforeseen medical expenses. So I would be happy to answer any questions or let Logan or Becca answer any questions for you.
I guess I, if Becca, you could talk just a little bit more about your organization and.
Happy to, absolutely. So I'm Rebecca Smith. I am co-founder and lead veterinarian um and amateur trainer for our organization. Um, our organization came about after my husband, Justin Smith, who is a critical care paramedic and who also has a history in ministry um and in the military, um, was seeing some of the same faces on his crew members in the fire department as he was seeing after the shock and awe um deployment that he was on when he was in the Navy. Um, he recognized that the uh trauma that first responders experience is one that is cumulative and not necessarily incidental in that they can't pin down where their mental health fatigue is coming from because it is a cumulative effect of the fact that our brains are not designed to process. Um, how many calls do you average a day? Chief Cardwell?
Sixteen to eighteen.
Sixteen to eighteen critical incidents a day. Most human beings um process or involved closely with four to five critical incidents in their life. So you can imagine the toll that that takes on a first responder. Um, as a result, um, obviously with my background as a veterinarian and, and amateur dog trainer, um, it was a natural fit because one of my clients had a uh German Shepherd who she was willing to donate to us to bring through the level of training to meet that that was inspired by uh DCI Special Agent Kristen Kotris with Canine Matt, who is the first dog certified at that level in this state. Our canine Glory, um, our first dog in our program is now the second dog certified at this level. And as of March thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, there will be fifteen more teams in first responder agencies across the state who are certified at that level to provide help in many areas as Chief Cardwell um spoke about earlier. So um, our heart for it is that uh we want to help implement these programs, and we work um hard to secure funding to make sure that a department can um implement this help without it being a burden on their department or their governing agency. So happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Hey, chief, the, I think this question's more for you. Um, I'm assuming that you're going to be on like A shift, B shift, C shift. So what happens if one of the other two shifts are in need?
We, we have a process in place where this shift supervisor can contact Logan and uh deploy the team from while he's off duty.
Okay. Awesome. I love this program. This is awesome. Thank you.
So it won't, the dog, you won't be able to do this for another year, or you already have the dog?
No, actually, Logan has already begun the training program. So uh, we hope to have the dog. He'll continue working with Logan through the rest of his training, but uh we hope to have him up and uh certified here in the next few months.
Oh, okay. Fantastic.
My only question is when do we expand it? So we have them, have three dogs, have them located at each station?
One at each station. That would be.
So we're going to start with this one and see how well the program goes. Uh, again, this is a new concept for our area, and then also the cooperation with the police department, as we've discussed. And then we have in there an ability, if we need to, to expand the program depending on need and, and wants.
Is Clive looking at it too? So we possibly, when we have the, you know, the, our closest unit responsive, we're looking at that and they are looking?
Yes, absolutely. Um, Clive PD is um also looking at it and working with their um overseeing authority to uh work out the details on that as well, so.
Do, do police dogs get a different training than fire dogs?
Yes, absolutely. So um, police dogs, when we think about them as a whole, we're thinking about our um animals that are trained for apprehension of suspects, um, for drug sniffing, um, for technology sniffing, et cetera. So these dogs are trained specifically and chosen specifically for their temperament in that they seek out people in need of attention um from them, and they also really enjoy that job. So whereas you wouldn't necessarily see a Malinois in a vest attached to a police officer or a sheriff and want to go up and give it a hug, these dogs um are very much the opposite. You're going to see with their body language immediately that they, they want you to come and interact with them. And I will say um Canine Blitz is one of the youngest in our program, and he is an absolutely exceptional candidate um for this program. So um, once approved, Urbandale is really going to have a, a powerful resource on their hands with Canine Blitz.
So do you, you don't start like with the, like the drug dogs or the police dogs? Those are generally start as puppies, don't they? And these are dogs that you've gotten that are already grown or?
No, um, Canine Blitz started training at twelve weeks.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So um, we do generally, we are going to go ahead and start young as a puppy. Um, we have a very established training program. It can be started in a dog at any age if a dog is the right fit. Right handler, right fit with the dog. We have a six-year-old Labrador in our program um that is badge with the Cassous County EMA, and he's a wonderful fit. Um, his career won't be as extensive, but uh we do start as young as twelve weeks as well.
You noted that you do a lot of fundraising. Is that something where the, the department would be kind of in a supporting role of helping with some of that fundraising to, as part of this agreement?
Uh, correct. So everything is outlined in an agreement between Crisis Canines of the Midlands and the department. Um, but essentially, um, in the case of Canine Blitz, um, nearly fully funded to complete the program. The, the minimum age for therapy dog certification is twelve months, and I believe Canine Blitz's one-year birthday is May twelfth, maybe?
May fifth.
May fifth. So um, so he's got just a little ways to go before he can receive the paperwork, um, but is fully ready to go through um with academy training um in, at the end of this month. And then will essentially have completed everything except the, the three months to be old enough. So, thank you.
All right.
Cool.
Any further questions?
Motion to approve, councillor seventy-seven seventeen.
Motion by McBurney.
Second.
Second by MacCarrberry Montgomery, discussion, please vote.
I think clearly we're all very excited about this.
Yeah.
Addition to the city staff.
Maybe if it doesn't work out, we can turn him into a city council?
Yeah. Yeah. You had overworked that animal.
Instruction.
That passes. Thanks. Thank you. Uh, item nine point four is to consider the petition waiver agreement for the Otto Barn Condominiums. And John, answer any questions if there are.
Just going to ask, is that on the map nor, hundred, it's a hundred ninth?
Hundred ninth and Justin on the curve there.
Okay.
Coming down on the curve.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Motion to approve council letter seven seven one six.
Motion by McCroll.
Second.
Second by McBurney, discussion, please vote. That passes. Item nine point five is consider the purchase for the North Karen Acres Park Playground Equipment, and to introduce this is our Assistant Parks Director, Scott Hope. Scott?
Thank you, mayor and council. Scott Hope with the Parks and Recreation Department. Uh, we have two playgrounds before you tonight. Uh, we should have two more next month as well, too. So uh, we are moving with some great projects thanks to council's support. Uh, the first one on the agenda tonight is North Karen Acres, which is just right over uh, not too far away. Uh, North Karen Acres was installed in two thousand, so it's an over twenty-year-old piece. Uh, the new playground that you can kind of see an image, and I'll show you a few more, has uh four and six-foot shaded decks. It has five slides, multiple climbers, and then some swings as well as part of the project. Uh, we did send out for bids for this project. We had asked the vendors to provide us options not to exceed a cost of one hundred thousand dollars for the equipment, delivery, and the installation. We had six vendors submit a total of nine proposals, so several of them submitted more than, more than one. Uh, we sent out letters to the neighbors, and we posted information on our media sites as well as through Nextdoor, uh, directing people to the website uh to share and, and give their input on which of the options they like the best. Uh, we had, uh, for North Karen, we had twenty-two comments online received. And then the pro, uh, proposals were also evaluated by city staff on four categories. Uh, play opportunity, site compatibility, accessibility, and then cost value. And then Design One from Cunningham Recreation received the most support. Uh, this is an image of it, uh, what it will have. You can see it, it's got some great slides. Uh, obviously, the covered decks uh are important, too, and this is just a rendering of it, of course, but this is, this is the pieces that it will have. Uh, this is how it will sit in the site. This, these colors are changed. These are not the colors we're using, but uh the ones that were before, and the slide before show the colors. And this is a footprint. You can see there's a lot of activity going on there, so it's a great improvement over the current options that we have at North Karen. And then just want to reiterate, we do have the companion swing as part of this project, uh, which is a nice addition as well, too. We get a lot of comments on the companion swing and having that where one child or a parent can sit on a swing, and then a toddler can be inside the swing so you don't have to sit there and push the whole time, which is a nice thing, so. Uh, installation does uh depend a little bit on the scheduling of getting the equipment in, uh, delivered. Um, but we are hoping for a May installation. Uh, staff is recommending the approval of the purchase for the North Karen Acres Playground from Cunningham Re- Recreation uh in the amount of nine hundred ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-five cents. I would be happy to answer any question.
You're saying nine hundred ninety-nine thousand?
Ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-five cents. I printed it so you can see it in case I said it.
Scott, I was just, I, I, I love those, well, I, I haven't had the opportunity to use them, but I've heard lots of great things about the companion swings. But I'm wondering about the platform, like the wheelchair platform swings? Are we required to have those?
So, uh.
Or do we put, just put them in at some parks, or how do we decide?
We haven't done any, any wheelchair platform swings. Um, part of that is because they're not actually certified by the uh AST. I think the ASTMA doesn't certify them because of the size of the, of the swing. Um, they are out there, uh, but they are not a certified piece that would, so we have.
I guess I've seen them met up than other non-Urbandale parks, then I guess I.
Right.
Don't pay attention.
Um, at, for our next, at South Karen, we'll have a nice, we're going to have a wheelchair accessible merry-go-round, which will be a nice feature to have at South Karen. But uh, we have not gone down the right of the swings because of the certification.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I think that'll be great for South Karen because that, that was one of the things I was going to point out is I didn't see very many accessible play features. Uh, it seems to be more geared towards.
It's a more active piece.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Both of these tonight are, and the next two will have a little bit more for that. Um, South Karen will have some pour and play, so will the regional park as well as for access. But these two, again, we, we kind of limited on, on funds and space, too. It gets a little bit harder with the spacing.
Yeah.
So.
You mentioned the pour and play. That's like the softer surface as opposed to the, the wood chips?
Correct. Wood, so wood chips are ADA accessible, but they're not as inclusive as the, as the pour and play would be. Um, but the pour and play is about twenty-three to twenty-six dollars a square foot, and it then limits, you know, available funds for other things. So we do try and pick it, so we're, we're trying to spread those places out. Um, so there are different areas and different neighborhoods that have that available to them, so.
Thank you.
Have you gone through the process so that you know that these four playgrounds together will fit within the budget?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. So we set amounts based on the budget, and then it kind of goes from there. So we leave a little bit of cushion. We'll provide the mulch and um some of the other little side things. We'll do that. But yes, it all, should all fit within the budget. Nikki won't let me do it any other way, so.
Do we get to move?
All right. Yep. Whenever you're ready.
Um, I would move um council letter seventy-seven zero eight.
Motion by Bodie.
Second.
Second by Rosendahl, discussion, please vote. That passes. Item nine point six is consider the purchase for Days Run Park Playground Equipment. Scott?
Thank you, mayor and council. Again, uh, we are looking at our second playground. Uh, this particular one is Days Run Park, which is Tanglewood and a hundred and twenty-fourth, a hundred and twenty-fifth, somewhere in, in kind of that neighborhood over there. Uh, that playground was originally installed in two thousand. Uh, the new playground, and it says shaded decks, but these, this one does not have the shaded decks. It's a pretty small footprint. Uh, but there'll be multiple slides, climbers, like two belt and two tot, no space for the companion swing on this one. Uh, this one does have some benches included because the benches that are there are a little bit older, and we want to replace them. Uh, the, the ones at North Karen were, were fairly new. A similar bid process, only we set the cost at seventy thousand dollars for this one. Again, smaller footprint, uh, same vendor submitted, uh, six vendors with nine proposals. Same process, letter sent out, posted on social media through Nextdoor. We have thirty-eight comments on this one, much more active neighborhood, a lot of houses that are close by. And again, we evaluated on the, on the same items. Uh, then Design Two from Park Planet Recreation uh did receive the most support. Uh, this is the image. Again, it'll, it'll fill up that space very well. Um, again, it's a small footprint, so uh a little limited on some of it, but it, it will have some nice pieces. And this is just a, a rendering of it with the color choices.
What is, um, you, on the very first picture, or?
This one?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, what, the Surf Rider, what is that? I mean, was that the thing hanging?
The Surf Rider.
Surf Rider below? And then in a few slides down, you had a picture of something hanging.
At the top of the twister slide?
Yes.
Surf Rider below.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. So yeah, that's, that's this piece down here. It, you, you stand on it. It's, it's like a standing swing, I guess, for lack of a better word. So, uh, different companies call it different things. They all get.
I never knew what that was.
It's just a balancing piece.
That looks pretty cool.
Yeah. For someone younger than me.
Eleven or twelve, not for me, but.
I was going to say, I would love to see you.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we probably had to go test these out when they get installed, so I, I'd be willing to try it.
Surfing in Iowa.
This is a different vendor, but same plan to hopefully get something in before May. Uh, they like to get those in before the schools get out because they all get busy doing school installations during the, during the summer months. Uh, staff is recommending the approval of the purchase of the playground equipment for Days Run from Park Planet, which is a PlayCraft product in the amount of seventy thousand dollars. Nice, easy round number. which is a play craft product in the amount of seventy thousand dollars, nice easy round number for me to say, so.
Move Councilor seventy-seven oh nine.
Motion by Bodie.
Second.
Second by Rosendahl, discussion, please vote. That passes, thanks. Item nine point seven is considered the equipment purchase for the Police Department Support Vehicle, and Captain Steins here to answer any questions, Dan, do you have any further to add, or? Okay, Dan would answer any, he'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any, so.
Only thing I'll say is I noticed that they're Toyotas this time.
We actually put in for this two years ago for a Toyota Camry, hybrid. And here again, it carried for a year, and then they canceled the bid, we tried it again, and then nobody did. So we moved to this small SUV, hybrid, to try and fill the hybrids spot.
Glad you found some.
I'll move approval, Councilor seventy-seven one one.
Motion by Kroll.
Second.
Second by McBurney, discussion, please vote. That passes, all right. Item nine point eight is considered the equipment rental for the trucks for the spring cleanup, John.
Well, this council item is purely to, more or less for rental of trucks and, and people for assistance with it. I just wanted to give you a quick overview of spring cleanup this year. So basically, spring cleanup this year, and this is the flyer that'll be going out with the water bills, but it's gonna be April fifteenth through the eighteenth. And with our guidance we give them, basically, the items are accepted, not accepted, and also let them know, you know, it can't just be thrown on the curb, it has to be neatly packaged up, and it's intended to be about the size of a pickup truck load and what we'll pick up. Then we also, on the backside, we let them know about our bulk item collection, which we will do for a fee, come to your house and pick it up after it's been scheduled, or, which I think has been very popular for us, is our second Saturday of the month drop off at Parks and Public Works. We're really hopeful we'll see this year our tonnage go down, because so many people have dropped things off, but we'll, we'll see what comes of that. Then we also hit on the tire drop off that was recently approved by the council, and I believe the bicycle recycling was on the consent agenda tonight, so we've, we've hit all these things that will be sent out to people.
What about, aren't we doing the electronics recycling that day too? Can we put?
Right, I believe, I believe that was coming about after this was already, already sent out. Or it's, it's sent to be, it's at the printer, I should say, so it was already after that fact.
Well, I think it's great that everything, like, so many things are coming together, I don't remember, was that with you, Blake? I don't know, I was with somebody last spring at the electronics recycling event, and that was just so cool, and I think that we, I mean, that if, that we can pull all this together during the same week and really push it hard for people to get their stuff to the right place to take advantage of the different programs and recycling, and is really a, a great service.
Only thing I should hit on as well too, is we do have, if you have extra cardboard to recycle, we've got a container at Parks and Public Works as well for, for that.
So that's, that's there permanently now?
Yep, that's there all the time.
Okay. Wonderful, any other questions? Now, is there a motion?
Motion approved, Councilor seventy-seven ten.
Second.
Motion by McBurney, second by Kroll, discussion, please vote. All right, that item passes. Then my, item nine point nine is to have a discussion regarding the Aurora Avenue and Seventieth Street, Complete Streets, John.
Just give me one second to pull everything up here. Okay, here we go. All right, so tonight, I just wanted to provide an update on kind of where, where we've been and where we're at currently on our complete streets related to on Aurora Avenue and Seventieth Street. So just a little bit of history on it, it was on December third of twenty nineteen that our original Complete Streets master plan was approved. And in that plan, there's a recommendation for Aurora Avenue between Eighty-Sixth Street and Merle Hay Road to basically have a trail or separated bike lanes, so, you know, adjacent to the street. And what their plan was, is we'd take the four lanes, narrow it to three lanes, and with that, we'd remove a section of the street, redo a new curb and gutter to create enough room within the, the parking space to create a trail. And then for Seventieth Street, between Hickman Road and Urbendale Avenue, what they're recommending is basically bike lanes being added onto the road after we widened it. And then on Seventieth Street between Urbendale Avenue and Merritt Drive, was to take the four lane section, use the outside two lanes as the bike lanes, and in the areas where we had parking was to eliminate the on-street parking. So it was on October twelfth to twenty-one, we did a presentation kind of running through these different options and how they would work and kind of the expense that came, came with them. And out of that meeting, the direction from the council was to look at doing on-street bike lanes on Aurora Avenue from Seventieth Street to Eighty-Sixth Street to kind of get a good starting point. Then on Seventieth Street, to use the existing pavement for bike lanes and not eliminate the on-street bike, or on-street parking. So it was in May of twenty twenty-two, we hired Snyder and Associates to put together the design for us. And then it was in September of twenty twenty-two, Snyder and Associates presented their concepts at, at a lunch and learn. So this is parts of their presentation, but basically Aurora Avenue is a width of forty-one to forty-two feet wide, has around four thousand six hundred vehicles per day on it, and the speed limit of the twenty-five miles per hour. Looking at the roadway today, so it's got four lanes, each ten foot wide. And in the sections that Snyder was proposing, where we had the left turn lanes, we would have a ten-foot left turn lane and two ten-foot travel lanes, a painted delineation between the cars and the bikes and a five-foot bike lane. And where we were able to, or didn't require the left turn lane, we'd have two twelve-foot lanes for the vehicles, a three-foot painted buffer area, and then the five-foot bike lane on each side. So kind of run through here how that looks. Okay, starting at Eighty-Sixth Street, which is at the west end of our project, and looking at Aurora. If we're going eastbound, that's where we'd start off with the bike lane with the buffered, buffered lane neck, you know, the buffering next to it with the pavement markings. As you continue east, we'll hit a spot where parking is allowed on the south side of the road. So if there happened to be a car parked there, the person on the bicycle would need to merge into the traveled way around the car and then can go back into the bike lane. Then just kind of looking while we're here for westbound, we'd also have the same buffered bike lane on the north side. As we're coming to the end, end of the, the street, they would merge back in with the through traffic and then go north or south on Eighty-Sixth Street or west on the trail.
So by buffered, that, like a curb?
No, it's just, it's just painted, a three-foot wide stretch that is painted.
And you said on the south side that that's parking area, isn't it just the turning area into Northwest Country Club?
This area in purple.
Oh, the area in purple, okay.
That's where we have several houses that.
Got it.
The driveways go out to Aurora Avenue.
Okay, got it, sorry, I was confused there.
That's all right. So as I say, and that buffered, buffered bike lane would continue going to the east until we come up to the middle school. So once we come up on the middle school, you can see we've got our buffered pavement markings here. It would narrow down to be where we have the five-foot bike path and then the painted line here separating the traveled way from, from the bicycle lane. So we'd have one lane that continue eastbound, we would have a left turn lane set up to go into the school. Then coming from the other direction, you would have your, your westbound lane. Looking on the east side of the intersection.
And John, we're not gonna talk, or we're not, we're not gonna consider putting a signal at the middle school area?
No. Okay, so, and then looking at kind of the other side of the intersection again, we'd come out of the turn lane and go back into the buffered bike lane here. As you're going westbound, we would have our buffered lane and the bike lane, and it would come down to where you would just have your bike lane, that would be between the through lane and the right turn lane. Then on the other side of the intersection, you'd be on the north side of the road. One of the issues we were looking at through here is typically, when, when you've got, especially the pickup for the middle school, they'll be in this right turn lane, and it'll spill back quite a, quite a ways back to the east. What, what's kind of nice about how this layout works is with the five-foot and the three-foot here, we have eight-foot. Typically, your car or your pickup is gonna need six to seven feet. So while they will block, you know, the bike lane that is there, the through lane will still stay open. And if there did happen to be somebody on the bike, again, you could come out, ride in the lane till you've got past the middle school and then back into the, into the bike lane. As we continue to the east, again, as we leave the middle school, we'll have the buffered bike lanes on the outside. And that continues until we come up to Seventy-Second Street, where we have the traffic signal for the senior center and, and the high school. So again, you'd be in the buffered lanes, when we come up to the turn lane, it would drop down to just the painted line between the, the traveled way and the bike lane, a through lane and our left turn lane in. On the east side of Seventy-Second Street, we would continue after our, we'd have our left turn lane on for Seventy-Second. We'd continue with a two-way left turn lane through this next stretch over to Seventieth Street, and that's basically with the access points that we have for the school. We have the one on the west side of the school and another one on the east. So instead of trying to develop left turn lanes, we can, we did a continuous two-way left turn lane through there with the bikes again being, being on the outside in the buffered, buffered lane. And then we'd come up to Seventieth Street where, I'll talk about that in a little bit in a minute, but you can go north-south on Seventieth or just the bike lanes at this time would, would end at Seventieth. So I guess before moving on, any, any questions on the Aurora section?
So going back to Seventy-Second. Just ensuring, bikes are expected to yield to all traffic signals, right?
Correct, yep.
And then for any cars that spill over into the, into the bike lane, that may, because we, we talked about especially in the middle school, picking them up. Is there any, I guess, there, there's nothing saying that a car can occupy a bike lane, right? I, I guess maybe this is more for Captain Stein, there, there's no law on the books now that says that a car can't occupy that bike lane, right?
Not that I know of right now.
Okay.
It'd have to be researched.
All right, so again, I think on middle school, I think it's gonna operate fairly similar to what it does now. You know, it's a little different in the fact that, you know, we've got four lanes out there and usually have cars parked in, in the north lane. Here, we'd still have cars parked in kind of that north lane. One other thing I guess I didn't mention also is, just because we do have the painted crosswalk on the west side, you know, it is gonna be easier to get the students across the street when we're dealing with three lanes now instead of the four lanes that we were, were before. Getting just a little bit less traffic, not less traffic, less lanes to maneuver through. Any other questions on, on this? Okay, so the next part is on Seventieth Street. Up at the north end is predominantly around forty-one feet wide, the south end is a lot narrower at twenty-five to thirty-one feet, so basically a two-lane versus a four-lane roadway. And our traffic is closer to six thousand to seven thousand five hundred vehicles per day on Seventieth Street. So showing what we're looking at now is kind of, you know, I'll start at the bottom here with Hick, Hickman up to Hopkins, that's where we got the thirty-one foot back-to-back. So again, our existing is still a two-lane roadway, and then we're proposing to have the two lanes plus, plus the bike lanes on the outside with just the, the single pavement marking in between the lanes, two different lanes. And then as we're looking up in the narrower twenty-five foot back-to-back, where there's just two lanes now, there'd be the sharrows for sharing the road through that section there. And then as we get a little further north where we have the additional width, we've got the four ten-foot lanes, and it'd be similar, similar to Aurora where we could have three ten-foot lanes, the pavement marking, and then a five-foot bike lane on, on each side. And then where we didn't need the left turn lane, we'd have two twelve-foot lanes, three-foot buffer, and then a five-foot bike lane on the outside. So now I'll step through what that looks like here. All right, so we got Hickman here on the left-hand side. Seventieth Street today, we've got one northbound lane, southbound left turn lane, and then a, a southbound lane. So in those areas, we would be on-street for the bicyclists. And as we got just north of this intersection, we've got room to create the bike lane on the outside. So you'd be on the outside northbound, continuing up to the north. If you're southbound, you'd be in the bike lane. As, as you came down closer to the intersection, then you would need to merge in, into with the traffic. So we'd be able to continue our outside bike lane up to the intersection of Rockland Drive and Sher, Sheridan Circle. And that's where we narrow up to the twenty-five feet wide section of the roadway. So it'd basically be the sharrows. When we talked about this before, the biggest issue was, was trying to widen this. The issue we had is the road's not even centered in the right of way because of the topography of the area. There's some driveways that are extremely steep now, and once we widen them, I'm not sure they could get into their house anymore. So there were some definite constraints going, going through this area. So we'd continue with the sharrows until we got up to the intersection with Urbendale Avenue. And at that time, we'd come on to Seventieth Street, and we'd have the buffered bike lanes on both sides of the street. And those would continue to the north up to Douglas Avenue. Douglas being another location where we would need the left turn lane, so if you were going northbound, you'd be in the buffered bike lane, and then you would merge in with the traffic to cross through the intersection. Be similar for the southbound, they'd merge in with the traffic, get through the intersection and back into the buffered bike lane. Now continuing north from Douglas, again, we'd be able to continue in the lane and then move in, into the buffered bike lane, moving north. You can see with the purple is when we start going into the area where there's parking. As I said before, that you, if there's a parked car there, they need to merge in with the traveled, in the traveled way there and then come back into the bike lane. That would continue up until we get to Aurora, which again, has a similar situation with the left turn lane. So we would drop the buffered part and come into a bike lane and can, and then again, continue through the intersection, being able to get back into the buffered lane. One other thing to note is, right now, we do have parking up close to the intersection, that would need to be pulled back some just due to the left turn lanes and making everything fit, so there would be some, some modifications to the parking at the intersection. And then we would continue that same layout all the way up to Meredith, in which case then, again, as we come up to the intersection, they'd come out of the buffered into the traveled way, either to go left or right. And if somebody was coming off of Meredith, right as they came around the corner, they would be, enter into the buffered bike lane. So I guess, any questions on the Seventieth Street section?
Do students park on Seventieth of, then the vicinity of the high school?
Park behind on Twana.
Okay.
I don't think there's anything that would prevent them, but.
But they just don't.
They don't, yeah.
They're preferred.
It's, it's.
Not close enough.
It's the fur, that's one of the furthest places to park to go over.
So this was proposed in.
So this was proposed in twenty twenty-one. Was it was that?
Yeah, twenty-one, twenty-two timeframe, yes. Yep.
And what kind of feedback did we get from the cycling community in regard to these?
I don't know that we really got a lot. I don't think we had a lot of feedback from, you know, there's a few people in opposition, I think purely because it was by the middle school. But I don't think we got, there wasn't a lot of opposition nor a lot, lot of real support, I think.
I heard a lot of support.
Did you?
From cyclists, yeah.
There's been a lot of support for that and it is consistent with our, I mean, we have a master plan for the complete streets and that's consistent with that too, so.
I should say, just at at the meetings that we've had here, there really hasn't been a lot of vocal support or opposition to it.
Gotcha.
Well, say at the meetings, we've had more opposition than support.
Right, but I think it's probably a couple, a couple.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean.
Yep.
But we did, yeah, at that time, just decided we better have some better. We didn't have a whole lot of PR about it going moving forward, so we thought we now now's the chance to get out ahead of this.
Yep, that's my next slide. So that is something we've talked about, looking at what we would do to help get the word out. So what we'd be look to have is a public informational meeting, not not a let's redesign the project. Let's just inform the public on here's what we're proposing, here's how it works and how it will work. And we were looking at doing that like a month before the CIP meetings. That way, somebody if they had concerns could approach during during the CIP time and discuss that in those forums. And what we would look to do is we'd send a letter to a notification areas. They get us invite via letter, which go in the next one, we've kind of shown kind of a red area. That basically on each side of Aurora and each side of Seventieth, we get get a letter from the city. And then we would also um notify people through the city's newsletter, our website, social media, and then the postcards that we send out. And we'd also look to work with the school district to do it through their mass emails and then their newsletter as well to get get the word out as much as we possibly can. And then I guess right now it's in the CIP for twenty twenty-five. I think part of our purpose of this, this meeting is just to make sure everybody's on board, answer any questions the council may have before we go to our next steps with the public.
And this would be just repainting, like there would, there would be no road construction as part of this?
On on Aurora, there we there would be some I call road construction is since it's got the asphalt surface, we would mill it off. Put a new new surface course on so we could paint it. The main thing for me is I think if we go out there and just, you know, remove the pavement markings on the asphalt, you can have those scars everywhere. And I think it it's just gonna deter from the project and and hurt his chances of being successful by looking bad. So by milling it off, get our new surface and the correct paint that does, those are the only marks you see will make it more successful. Seventy Street would be purely pavement markings.
And what would the timeframe be for marking that? Like, are we, is there a a lead-up to the school year or something where it'll be marked before that, well before that? So there's a.
Actually, actually, would likely the the Aurora piece would be done in the summertime, avoiding the Fourth of July. So we can get that done so we get that narrow window. We have a little more, you know, time available for the Seventieth Street. But again, the Seventieth Street won't take them very long to paint.
So what differentiates how it is today from how it's being proposed in here? Because from from a driver's perspective, there's no penalty, or we don't think that there's any penalty currently.
Parking, but again, you're not, when it, when you got the bicycle symbol and everything and painting the buffer, that's not gonna feel like a place to drive. You'll drive in the lane.
What do you mean it's not gonna feel like a place to drive?
I'll zoom in a little bit so you can see it.
You're gonna know that a car shouldn't be there.
Yeah, let's see here.
On Aurora, it's gonna be dedicated bike lanes.
Right, but there's nothing stopping somebody from treating it like it was, right?
Just to kind of show.
It's gonna be striped.
Striped.
Yeah, so again, you will see.
There's no penalty associated with crossing those stripes is what I mean. And there's no way of stop, I mean, uh, am I wrong?
Um, well.
I don't know.
Larry, I don't, I don't know for sure right up hand, but I I you're gonna, it's gonna sense like the lanes are there. There'll be the car lanes and there'll be the bike lanes, so.
Right, but you could overtake somebody in a vehicle going into bike lane and not have any impediment, right? Yeah, right, I mean, like, we're not, right, so it's just, it's all gonna be similar road surface. There's not gonna be anything that would prevent somebody from using the bike lane in their vehicle instead. I just wanna make sure that when we do this, that we offer the riders as much protection as possible and make it feel like a dedicated bike lane. Because right now it's it's pavement markings and, well, yes, the people up here are more willing to follow based on what the pavement markings are. I just, I I would prefer to have something to assist in ensuring that people aren't using it for reasons that are using it for things that it shouldn't be used for.
I think that the advantage too is there'll only be three lanes. And so it's gonna feel near more narrow. Because you're gonna have that five-foot buffer, so you're gonna feel.
So we won't, I mean, yeah, uh, possibly, yeah.
So it's not like it's gonna feel like a natural, like.
Yeah.
Additional lane.
Yeah, and because I just, I I just want to ensure that we we provide as much. If we're gonna do this, which I'm I'm fully on board with doing, and I know I've talked to you guys in the past about it. I just want to ensure that they actually have something afforded to them to remind drivers to not be in this lane.
From the penalty aspect, as the captain mentioned, we can do the research of the communities that have had it or any type of anything through the traffic organizations to find out if there's anything. Ticketable offense, I will call it, that we we can use. I mean, it's, it would be after the fact, so that's one of those.
Right, I mean, most laws are after the fact, right, or not.
But at the same time, we can certainly re- research from a penalty standpoint. Um, and from an engineering or design standpoint, uh, as as John outlined, they they should be fairly well marked.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I I appreciate you wanting to not take the Hickman approach of and properly redo the markings.
We don't, but we don't have anything in our current ordinances, either John or Dan, you don't.
I don't know right now. Like I said, we'd have to do some research, but the council could pass something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To say, hey, no driving in that, continued driving in that lane.
Yeah, I just want to prepare us to be able to do things like that.
Keep in mind though, we'll have spots where they'll be able to park and, you know.
Right.
Kind of have, as you said, at the middle school, they'll almost be parked in the bike lane at certain times as well, but. But again, we can look, I just don't recall any ordinance specific to that.
Which I asked, what what really differs? Because that was what made me think of it was, you know, you're gonna have cars parked in the bike lane. From the middle school going back, and it's just gonna feel like it is today where folks, I mean, you can ride today and, uh, you know, by law, bicycle is considered a vehicle and has every right to the road.
Right.
So how how is it differing? That's, that's the only thing I want to take into consideration as we move forward with this.
As a cyclist, there's a lot more comfort in a lane that's painted for you. And uh, not, and it's not a ten-foot lane, it's a five-foot lane. So it's not something that the driver is gonna feel like they're supposed to turn it into.
At least.
Yeah. But but I think your points well taken, Larry, it'd be smart to have some actual photos and examples of similar layouts where we're actually seeing them.
Sure.
Uh, painted and um, like Jeremy Lewis at the Bike Collective probably could provide us with some good information. And whether or not there are other ordinances elsewhere, I'm not sure that that's necessary. I I love the idea of it, but it may not be necessary if in fact, you know, they've got a lot of good research on this that shows how it works. I I would like to suggest that we back up your timeline a little bit. Uh, I'm a little concerned about just one month before the CIP. I I just.
We were just worried if we did it too early, there'd be a lag and then people may not, may not voice one way or another come CIP time.
Yeah, but maybe maybe a couple, three months so that if it is disconcerting, we'll recognize that and can have time to do the public education.
I I feel very strongly that we need to move that up or up, I guess, because. I mean, we tried to, we were going to take, you know, implement this and I voted to not implement it because of the amount of public comment and um concern there was about the project. And I feel like if we put it one month ahead of when. We're presenting a budget that includes approving it, it appears that we're not really listening to our constituents. While I feel like this is necessary, I think we need to do do all of the things that we outlined. I I think that's a very thorough list, but I think we need to do it in the summertime or uh well before, um, you know.
Or early.
October.
Or right after school starts or something.
Yeah, because it it show, I don't think it shows that we're taking the public comment seriously and. I want to show that we are taking their comments seriously because I, I mean, as much as I support this, I've gotta support our residents and their concerns as well. Where while I, which is why I think we need to do education around why this is a good idea and. Frame it as much as a safety issue. I mean, this, this is probably the number one street, in my opinion, in Urbendale where we have inexperienced drivers um coming from the high school. Just I, with the problems on Facebook today, I was barely on, but the one thing that popped up was some kid went, was going sixty-five. Down Aurora and some mom stopped at the stoplight and the kid was giving her the bird and um it's fun. You go read that on on the Urbendale Community page if you want, but this is the one street in Urbendale where. We're gonna see our high school kids driving that don't have, I mean, which is why I think your, you know, your concerns about, you know, the kids, you know, just. Oh, let's pass in the bike lane to, you know, show this old grandma what I got in my, you know.
My little smart car.
My getup. Um, so I think we have to to move up the public comment and education because. I'm not gonna be comfortable supporting this project without really solid um public communication and education. Because we got um more negative comments on this than any, well, maybe the pool um and the rec plex or the Uplex. But um than anything else that we've done in my tenure on the council. So I want to find a way to move forward on this project and bring our community with us.
John, I was just gonna suggest, I imagine Snyder's got a ton of built project pictures. I can't imagine, they must have done tons of this. So it would probably behoove us to have them part of the education piece.
That is my intent is, next night, the educational, they are taking the lead.
Beautiful, okay, gotcha.
Well, and I know some of the things I've seen in other cities that have bike lanes, you have, you know, the downtown Des Moines one where it's like the the wall of the little flimsy things. Not saying we need to go that route, but I've also seen it where they have raised uh asphalt, cement, whatever, like it's almost a little speed bump.
Speed bump, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just things like that, and I know that might hinder the parking piece of it, so I don't know how that would play a role in there, but.
And and again, it'll affect their cost, isn't it?
Well, yeah, and I understand, you know, affecting costs, but if we can discourage people from utilizing something that it's not supposed to be used for as more of a preventative measure. Because I know if we do pass an ordinance, that's more of a reactionary measure, right? But anything that we can do to make it safer on the streets for our our cyclists, because, you know, it's, I don't, I don't partake in the streets as much as I do on the trails. But I I want to ensure that they have as much protection afforded them as possible.
Yeah.
You had mentioned something about the school, I I think it was like an education slide or like the notification schedule that we were gonna do. I mean, is there, I feel like there's an opportunity to partner with the school district to educate students at the middle school and the high school about the rules of. Or the intent of this project in particular. Because if we're talking about folks that are driving that don't have the experience level of dealing with bike lanes when they're driving regularly. Maybe this is an opportunity to get that into the school so it's right in front of the students. And before this project shows up, they're seeing it, saying, so they're getting bike lanes in their head. And then once the project shows up, try and reinforce that again and say, hey.
Sure.
It's here now. You know, this, this is what you need to be paying attention to, especially with turn lanes. I mean, turn lanes are dangerous when it comes to bikes, so.
I also think this will be something likely, once it's up and running, they'll, driver's ed will use this as an example and they'll, they'll learn to drive it also.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a normal route for driver's ed right now, because this is my neighborhood and I get to deal with it regularly. So, yeah.
We can certainly come back with alternative dates on the on the meetings.
Yeah, yeah, we can look at that.
AJ, when we talked today, I guess I was under the impression that the April meeting that we were holding at the senior center was gonna be. More related to this than um something down the road. But I I guess I was mistaken in our discussion.
That was my fault, I had.
Okay.
I had inadvertently suggested that, and when I talked to John, he said, well, we didn't really have that on the radar that early in the process. So that was, that was my mistake.
And I I think it's best to have this a standalone.
Oh, absolutely.
Make maybe a long meeting, it's hard to say, you know, taking away from the purpose of the April meeting.
And this may even require two sessions. You may have something in September and October. And then you give people a chance to show up at two different times if it doesn't fit their schedule. Because if you're looking for a month before CIP and we do CIP in November.
Yes, it's too tight, yeah.
Then if you do that in October, in the meeting, uh, but. Again, finding that sweet spot where you have people who participate who don't have summer activities, sports activities, those type of things. And having done this a while, you'll never find that sweet spot. So if you offer maybe two potential meetings where you say, we're gonna meet on this date, on this date, hopefully it fits your calendar and your schedule. At least they have the opportunity at least more than once to show up.
No, I think.
Soften the crowd a bit as numbers.
Yeah, I think that's absolutely imperative that we have at least two meetings. And I don't know if we, you know, I think waiting till after school starts to be able to utilize um like school messing, I mean. So much of that stuff happens regardless of whether school's in session according to my texts and emails and everything, so. Um, but I think maybe waiting to, you know, till uh, you know, September would probably be okay. But I wouldn't wanna go much later than that to start.
Yeah, I agree.
All right. May for the discussion.
Yeah, thanks, John.
Thank you, John. This is something I think, again, yes, we do need to get the education out, but um this is a, I think, an important project for a community and. As we move along, we need to, yeah, it is a safety issue. It's a safety issue for, to provide access for for all modes of transportation throughout our city, so.
Yeah.
John, thanks for your work, I appreciate it. All right, we, that takes us to the end of our regular agenda. Mayor Council, I was Bridget.
Um, had a DART commission meeting today, so um those are really joyful these days. Um, last week or the week before, uh, we had our budget meeting. Um, AJ and Curtis uh attended that. We are going to, Urbendale is looking at a four-hundredth uh of a cent increase, point zero zero four, am I getting that right? That's.
That's a thousand.
Um, increase for, from fiscal year twenty-four to fiscal year twenty-five. What Urbendale and the other suburbs are paying, our our levy rates are not impacted by what's going on with Des Moines. Des Moines is, uh, we have been separated um just because of the way that the funding formula is um set up. Um, we are setting the budget for a very limited contribution from the city of Des Moines. Which is um, they're offering to make two one-time payments for the next two years. Which would result in a only a twenty percent service cut and other related cuts. They would have until um the end of May to pass a franchise fee, one and a half or two and a half percent. Uh, there were some very good uh opinion and editorial pieces in the Register this weekend. Uh, there were some very good, uh, opinion and editorial pieces in the Register this weekend. That would, if they were able to do that by the end of May, we could re- twenty percent would be, would go down to ten percent, I think that's based on a one and a half percent. The Register and other folks like myself would love to see a two and a half percent increase, which would eliminate the need for, um, any reductions. But we have a similar process that we have to follow at DART, uh, so we're gonna set the budget hearing at the beginning of April, likely have a special meeting at the end of April to approve the budget. But then we have to go through public input process on service cuts, we have to do some federal, um, investig- analysis to make sure we're not overly impacting minorities and other identified groups. I think that'll show that we probably are, um, but we just have to do the analysis, we don't necessarily have to do anything about it, which is unfortunate. And then in July, we would vote on service cuts, so there's still an opportunity for Des Moines to come in and pass a two and a half percent franchise fee, but, um, we're moving ahead, our DART staff is doing, uh, amazing work to kind of bound, go forward with two possible budgets, but we're doing the worst-case scenario so that the state, we can do a better case scenario and not have to mess with, you know, the state, so. I don't know, it's really, um, frustrating. I did have a great meeting, though, with Amanda and Catlin Curry, who's the mobility coordinator, as an offshoot of our human services study to loop them in on the number of comments related to improving transportation within Urbandale. Cause ultimately, I'd like to get to the point where DART can start addressing those lo- lo- local-level concerns and not these system-wide crises, so, um, I don't know. There's a lot going on, as you know, you can always ask me, but I'd encourage you to read, share, ask questions, um, related to those, um, editorials that I shared with you. I think that's, that's all I have, sorry to be a Debbie Downer.
I just wanna remind people that there's the Sustainable Urbandale Action Plan meeting tomorrow at two to five from the library. There was a meeting yesterday from three-thirty to five at the chamber, I was not able to attend that one, I hope to stop into the one tomorrow, but of course, it is, um, it's League of Cities Day, so, uh, who knows how that's all gonna go. And, um, Amy wanna, may wanna report on this too, but just real quick, uh, the Allison Van Pelt presentation at the Mid-Iowa Association of Local Governments? No, not.
Mid-Iowa, my log, just say my log.
My log. Where Allison Van Pelt kind of outlined a fifty-million-dollar grant that they're going after, uh, that will be focused on, um, persons of need doing weatherization primarily, and also some level of expansion of access to electronic vehicles and things like that, that was sort of the main thrust. There's a lot more, it was a pretty, uh, it was a good presentation, there's a lot more in there than that, but that's the thrust of it. So we'll be kind of getting that information from Allison pretty shortly. It may be, it was supposed to be out yesterday, but I heard from her and I don't think it was. So, uh, the actual grant request that this getting submitted, and we got a little one-pager from her that we can probably share.
What is my log?
It's my mayor's room, Mid-Iowa Association of Local Governments.
Yeah, so he.
Allison was there, so, uh, I was out last week, so Amy and, and Pat went and.
So are they submitting this grant on behalf of Polk County, or?
It's a seven-county area that they're representing. But they're doing it through Polk County, because the state had turned down, um, the money. And so they're going after it now through Polk County, but a seven-county region.
And it will be ran through the housing trust funds?
Right, and the money will not go to the cities, the money is going to go more through the trust funds and more directly to, to residents, and it'll be targeting low-income residents. And they're using mapping tools to establish that. So we didn't really have a handle yet on how many people in Urbandale would maybe get access to this, but it.
Is it individual, is it based on an individual income, or like a census area?
I'm unclear on that, I think maybe you gotta stronger.
More individual.
That's the impression I got, but I.
So likely.
Within census tracts.
Yes.
Kind of both.
And we didn't.
Cause I think we'd have an opportunity to have more people if it was based on the individual rather than.
So the way she explained it is that there's multiple ways that the feds can define census tracts or low-income areas, and they're using the most liberal definition that opens it up more widely.
Some of those folks, uh, like she's told Peter to cook, uh, you know, you got one census tract if you push one button, and there's another button we can push, and Clive lights up. So I think they're kind of doing the Clive lights up version, uh, to the best of the variability, but then it goes into individual, uh, housing, houses. And what we didn't get to ask yet was, um, like, is it going to be involving training of folks who need jobs to be able to do the audits and the weatherization, because that's what some of the energy districts have done around the state? And she wasn't clear yet on how the relationship with the Polk County Energy District that's coming online, what that would look like. So there's still a lot up in the air, but she has gotten something in the door to make us eligible to go after a fifty-million-dollar grant.
It was a strategic plan, or there was some sort of plan that had to be submitted.
Right.
And then now she can write the grant.
And that strategic plan is what we should end up being able to see online any day now. And then I don't know where to bring up concerns, but I'll just toss one out, and then you can tell me if this was inappropriate, and we can tell me how to do these in the future. But I'd really like us to think long and hard about, um, lobbying. I am fit to be tied about the whack-a-mole legislature we've just had, and that SF four fifty-five that is likely going to pass tomorrow, it just sickens me that, that cities are being subjected to this, that our residents are gonna be subjected to either greater expense or much greater risk at flooding, this is ridiculous what's happening. And it seems as though, um, everybody at this table has really worked hard and done a wonderful job, and, you know, other staffers have as well. But it just seems like we need to go to the, ratchet it up, get to the next level somehow. I just wanna toss that out there, and then somebody tell me how to toss these ideas out in the future in an appropriate way. But that was, that's.
That's perfect.
Okay, I, I want us to give it some strong consideration and figure out a way to go about this. It's, uh, too hard, we've, we've, we're losing so much.
Pat, I, I, I don't disagree on that part, as far as the losing part of it, but I, I don't know, you know, again, we've talked about the lobbying, we can look at it again, obviously, the, for this year, we're.
Yeah, it's not for this year.
But, you know, you also look at the fact that a lot of other cities do have lobbyists, and they're, they're losing too, I mean, we're all losing together.
Yeah.
Is the unfortunate thing, and, um, you know, I don't know if it's for lack of awareness, or if the fact that Urbandale would have lobbyists on, on retainer, that's gonna help more, but we can certainly have that conversation.
Yeah, and I was just thinking it would be nice to have been able to be registered against some of these things. You know, I noticed that West Des Moines was registered against some things that, you know, we're, yeah, that we're not, we're not there, we're not clearly there, and I don't know whether it'd matter or not. Could, it could even be a bad idea, or maybe they're looking for, with Urbandale, like, something.
And, I mean, that, that's, that's the other part of the discussion, is whether or not that whole factor goes into what they do to cities too, that, you know, we, you know, that cities are hiring lobbyists and that.
Right.
We, we have to consider that, but I, I appreciate your comment.
All right, now, I'm, I'm, I'm done now, except there's an ICON meeting, and, uh, AJ pointed out that I need to learn a little bit more about the yard waste ticket, um, fees, um, from Metro, okay, I put an email out, but I will try and sneak out of that, uh, meeting tomorrow and run over to, Metro Waste Authority too.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
All right.
Amy?
I don't have anything else.
All right, please.
Uh, two things, one, we have another flag meeting tomorrow, uh, so we'll be doing some more sifting through, getting some theming. So we've got that coming up, and we've got another one set for the twentieth, I think, as well, so starting to narrow down those designs, and we'll have some recommendations to bring for council rating, and then community, uh, ranking, or council ranking and community rating.
Yeah.
Looking forward to that. Went to the Polk County Emergency Management Meeting two weeks ago, I think, uh, did the budget approval, and, uh, they had talked a little bit about the CAD-to-CAD work they're doing, it sounds like the, they have it set up right now where they can see all emergency vehicles, where they're at at any point in time, they're still working on the dispatching aspect of that. So they're continuing to work on trying to integrate those systems. That's all I got.
All right, thanks, Blake, Larry?
The only thing I have is more, I guess, for Jan. I don't know if you saw, but the public art grant was open for Bravo, if you haven't seen it yet, okay, you have, perfect, awesome. Then I have a Bravo meeting tomorrow, that, so I'll be a little bit late to the, the. Yeah, whatever, that, yeah, that thing.
All right, thanks.
Can I, I forgot one thing.
No, you're done.
You have two weeks.
I think most of us got this email from Dallas County Develop- or Development Alliance about a meeting on Saturday with, it was very vague, and I had some back and forth with them about a meeting with Joni Ernst related to childcare.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Okay, well, I'm gonna forward it to you guys, um, Joni Ernst wants to have a meeting with Dallas County officials to talk about childcare.
Is that?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, and, um, back and forth with them, ultimately got an email from Creighton with a graphic with Joni's picture on it, saying she wants to meet with, I mean, it sounds like one of these kind of last-minute thrown-together things, but I.
From Creighton Tides?
Yes, cause somehow.
Oh, he works for the.
Somehow he's affiliated with the Dallas County Development Alliance. You know, I hate to volunteer people for Saturday stuff, but might not be a bad thing for, um, someone to attend. If Joni, I don't even know if Joni's gonna be there, I can't attend, um, I don't know why city, county folks are being asked about childcare, I mean, it's, I, I don't know. But I think it's an economic development.
Seen the email, but.
Well, it was a very.
A vaguely.
All it said is, like, childcare meeting with Joni Ernst, like, that's all, all it said, and I felt like I was.
A little cryptic.
Trying to crack a code, and, like, I don't know, somebody punted it to Creighton to respond to me.
Three o'clock on Saturday, I do have an invite, okay.
But I have, I have the graphic that was supposed to go with it, and I'll send, I can forward it on to you guys, but, I mean, I think, I think it's actually with her, cause it looks like she's doing stuff in the dis- or in the state lately, so I don't know, but, um, I'll pass it on, I meant to, I meant to follow up with an email to you guys, cause it looks like it went to, like, every elected official in, that has a Dallas County, you know, part of Dallas County, but it's, um, yeah, clearly AJ doesn't know what I'm talking about, so I'll forward.
I, yeah, but it's, I, I could go out there at three o'clock on Saturday, so I might go. All right, uh, is it my turn now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Can the mayor speak now? Thanks. I do wanna, just following up on Women's History Month, uh, do wanna note, uh, for Tuesday, March twenty-sixth at noon at the Jovanetti Shelter, there will be a panel discussion, and I believe our council members are gonna be, Bridget, Pat, and Amy are gonna be part of that discussion. So mark your calendars on that, lunch will be provided free to employees, um, and so looking for some great discussion on leadership and uh, some good dialogue, so mark that down. I don't think to say, add on MPO at this point, since we've got Dylan Primat hired, so that's my update on that, so. I have nothing further, so we stand adjourned, thanks, everyone.